Thank you.
Hi, everyone, apologies.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, as we're reorganizing for this meeting, I'm going to start with the statement. As interim superintendent and acting chair of the Hampton Falls School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Hampton Falls School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 974-5528-3962, or by clicking on the following website address that is listed on the agenda and on the sau21.org website. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 114, or email at dtuite@saun21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. We'll now take roll call.
Greg Parrish.
Present, family in and out.
Jason Farias.
Here, family in and out.
Jill Swayze.
Here, family maybe in and out.
Anthony Lang.
Here, family in and out.
And Barbara Goodman.
Here, I'm alone.
Roll call taken.
Thank you. And before I call this nomination, I want to formally welcome Barbara Goodman to the board. Congratulations. Thank you for joining us, and thank you to all of our members for continuing on with us. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Per Hampton Falls School Board policy, BDA Board organizational meeting, I will now accept nominations for the position of board chair.
I'd like to, I guess, open up and just say, just a few words, how, I mean, it's been a year. You know, I came along at the beginning of all this, and I just want to just give, take a few moments and thank the leadership here, and specifically Greg and Beth and Dave, Carol, for all that you've done throughout the year. Greg, for you especially, we're just so lucky to have you guiding the ship here in these tumultuous times. And for that reason, I would love to put your name and nominate you first and foremost to continue in your current capacity. And, you know, we love your guidance. We, we, I think it's to have something stable as you in there and guiding this ship is very important. So again, I want to nominate Greg Parrish in that role of board chair.
If Greg doesn't object, I'll second that nomination. I think we have a pretty green board here, and I'm excited about what we can do with it. But I think, Greg, your leadership and experience will teach us all a lot.
I'm happy to do it. I would like to have a conversation in the next couple of months to maybe get back to a schedule of rotating that we did when I first got on the board. We tried to do it last year, but with Greg's departure, that kind of shot us in the foot there. But I am more than happy to do this. I would ask the board that whoever is nominated as vice chair, that they assume or prepare to take on the role as chair as part of the rotation. But again, we can have those conversations in a couple of months, just to, again, get back on that schedule.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. Was your previous rotation annually? You just tried to put a new, got it?
Yes, what we tried to do, Jill, or what was happening at the time when I was on the board, you'd have someone as chair, whoever was vice chair would be nominated for the following year, and then you'd get a new vice chair, et cetera, et cetera. Now, by no means because you're on this board, I think, do I think anyone would expect anybody to be chair or vice chair? So if you choose not to, that's fine. It would just skip down to the next person. And just as long as we rotate, that's all, Jill. I think that, I think that is good for the board.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I think we can have a roll call vote.
Okay, so Greg Parrish, I'm going to put you as abstained. Jason Farias.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
Anthony Lang.
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you. I hand it over to Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Arakilian. Jason and Jill, thank you for the kind words. You know, it's a team effort here. I'm just one cog in our wheel, but thank you. Next on the agenda, let me bring it up here, apology, is the appointment of a board vice chair. Can I get a nomination for a vice chair? I will, if I may, Jason, what I'd like to do is nominate you as vice chair.
I'd graciously accept that.
I was thinking the same thing. You beat me to it. I would second that nomination.
Okay.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I, is there any discussion?
I've seen you just rise to the occasion over the past year and certainly go above and beyond where I know none of us have time to go. So I really appreciate the work you're putting in and looking forward to working with you over the next couple of years.
Likewise. Yep, thank you, Jill. Myself.
And it sounds like we'll all get a turn in the seat anyhow, so.
Right.
Not that bad.
Didn't mean to imply that.
Any additional conversation?
Seeing none. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason, I'm going to abstain. Jill Swayze.
Yes.
Anthony Lang.
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you. Okay. Now, our appointments. Operations, Jay, if you don't mind, would you be willing to be our operations committee representative?
That's fine. I just attended my first meeting. This is the joint board operations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yep, that, that works fine, Greg. I can stay the course there.
Great. Dr. Arakilian, we don't need to vote on these, correct? We just appoint.
Well, you'll do one vote at the end of the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Operations committee alternate. This person would substitute for Jason when Jason would be unable to attend a meeting. Jill, would you be up for being the alternate to this committee?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you. The next item would be the policy committee. I was the representative to the policy committee last year. If anybody has any desire to do that, please let me know. If not, I'm more than happy to take that on again.
Greg, for some of these, maybe you can just remind us what, what it means, what the, I mean, is it, thank you.
Sure. For the policy committee, what we're doing there is reviewing all the policies in our policy manuals across the district, and periodically they need to be updated on a regular basis. And so what we've done, or under Dr. Lupini, they started from scratch, and they're going through the whole policy manual. And so as policies are updated, they're brought to the boards, and we vote on to accept or needs further review. So basically, what the rep will do is, you know, just participate in that process.
Right, correct me if, we just, we just voted for a whole new set of these, right? First and second reads?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So it should be pretty light this upcoming year, then, as far as that workload.
That I don't know. I don't know if Dr. Arakilian, you have any insight to that?
Yes, I can add to that in that. So we'll bring the, the policies for the final adoption to the joint board. But by that time, they have already been to the policy committee and to all the individual boards for a first read and then a second read. So sometimes it's the case that you can adopt them in the joint board if you don't have a quorum across all the boards, and then they have to go back to all of the individual boards. So sometimes it seems longer than it has to be, but, but that's not a lot of work. That's just a kind of a recalibration at the next meeting. As far as being on that committee, it's, it usually turns out to be quarterly, where we bring forward a new batch of legally required policies to the policy committee for a pre-review. You know, like a dozen or so policies is usually what it looks like, that are, there's either a due date or they need to be renewed. And sometimes we add on some recommended if they're particularly relevant, like we just, there's some about communicable diseases we just added. So that's pretty relevant. But, but, but as far as the policy committee itself, the work is right at the beginning. And then, you know, sometimes as that committee member, your fellow board members might ask you about the policies because you were there for the entire explanation at the policy meeting. So that's a piece of it, but it's only, you know, maybe three or four times over the year.
Thank you. I'll continue doing that. For the alternate, Anthony, would you be the alternate to that committee?
Yep.
Thank you. So our teachers' contracts. We will not be going into negotiations this year. Their contract has another year on it. And so these negotiations, I believe, will begin next year. So we do not need any representation for these two committees. So we will jump down to the facility committee.
I'll stay on that one.
You want to do that, Jay? Okay.
Yeah, we've got some items we want to take care of. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and Barbara, would you be the alternate to that committee, please?
Certainly.
So the facilities committee, let me back up a little bit. I believe we meet quarterly as well, or that has met quarterly as well. And basically, these conversations have to do with LAS in the building itself, looking at what needs to be done at it, prioritizing what needs to be done, keeping up on our maintenance, things like that, and communicating that back to the board. So during budget season, if we have projects coming up.
Yeah, it was big. Greg, you broke out, you broke off there a little, but it was, it was important this year with, with the discussion, the whole conversation regarding the HVAC and, and.
Do that again?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're back.
Am I in and out?
You froze for, for a little bit there.
At what point did I freeze? Do we remember?
The beginning of facilities.
The vice chair picked it up seamlessly. It was like, it was magic.
Okay, I'm going to, I basically, I just said what facilities was. Well, I'll jump down to, Anthony.
For the delegate one?
Yes.
Yeah, I can keep doing that. I was on the one, virtual one already, so I have a good feel for that.
And Jill, you want to be the alternate to that?
Yep, sure, that's fine.
Okay. Deb, do I have all of them?
So I feel like I, I lost a little bit. So facility, or facility committee of Jason Farias and Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Budget committee.
No, we don't have a budget.
Oh, you don't have that one?
No.
Okay. So what's the last?
You've got the delegate and the delegate alternate, right?
For?
NHSBA.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you. So it was Anthony.
Yep.
And then who was the alternate?
Actually, I asked, I asked Jill, but I'm going to back off on that one. Barbara, would you do that one? Thank you. I'll continue to manifest, and Jill, the reason I backed off on.
Yes.
That was the newsletter.
Yep, on it.
Okay.
What is the other? That's the big, should we, is that?
I have no idea.
Okay. I'm definitely not at them. Okay.
Okay, Deb, do I have them all?
So I have operations committee. I don't have the list in front of me because mine, I don't have the list in front of me either. So I have operations committee, Jason Farias, alternate Jill Swayze, policy committee Greg, alternate Anthony, facilities committee Jason, alternate Barbara, and the New Hampshire School Board Association, Anthony Lang and alternate Barbara.
Correct. Okay.
I, not to add to our plates, but I wonder if an other should, we should think about something that pertains to holding us accountable to the goals that we set last year, that we did jointly collect, develop those goals and objectives. And if we don't have a mechanism to check ourselves against them, then they get essentially ignored.
What I'd like to suggest there, Jill, is, and I was going to make this suggestion regardless of chair or not, at next month's meeting, I'd like to review those goals. And then I'd like to have a conversation, exactly what you just stated.
Great.
We can start getting that into our conversations on a, you know, annual or semi-annual basis here so we can keep up with our goals.
Thanks. I'd like that.
Okay. I think that's it. Any questions? Before we begin to, into the next part of the agenda, Barbara, congratulations and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Please feel free at any time to ask questions and reach out with questions. Give it time, you'll figure it out.
Okay.
We need to vote on the stuff that we, policy assignments.
Yes, there's a motion. Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve the committee appointments as presented. I guess that'll work, right?
Twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, the pre sixteen twenty-one, though you want. Just says motion to approve the following committee appointments in the board docs, so.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, Deb, can we get a roll call vote?
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Farias.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
Anthony Lang.
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Vote take.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our minutes. The first one would be from our February second meeting. Any, can I get a motion on those minutes?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February second, twenty twenty-one Hampton Falls School Board meeting.
Can you second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Any comments, thoughts?
Nope.
Seeing no discussion, Deb, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Farias.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
Anthony Lang.
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman.
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you. Do you prefer Deb or Deborah? Do you not care?
You can, I don't care.
Okay. Sitting here going through this and it's like, well, maybe I should say her real name. Okay, next item on the agenda is our March fifth, or the minutes from our March fifth meeting. Can I get a motion on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March fifth, twenty twenty-one special meeting.
And can I get a second?
A second?
Discussion, comments?
Only just a quick update. Lauren was sworn in the other day. I, I don't know, Greg, if you've been in touch with her about serving as a clerk for the whole year or where that stands, but.
I haven't. Per your communications, I kind of got the impression she only wanted to do that unless you know something I don't.
I think, I'll double check with her, but I think she's willing to continue on because it's, you know, a matter of a couple of hours over the course of a year.
It's pretty, it's pretty low impact.
Yeah, yeah, so she seemed quite willing to help us out for the year.
And actually, you bring up a good point, Jill, that we still do need to find someone for the year from now until next March. Or I'm, yes, or until next March. So if she chooses not to, we still need to find something and someone.
Yeah, so I'll double check with her, or Jay, if you connect with her sooner.
Greg, is that something we should put on the meeting for next month? Or not?
You know what? Let me look into that. I actually don't know the answer to that.
Versus.
Dr. Arakilian, if she chooses to do this, or anyone chooses to do this for the next twelve months, we must appoint her, point that person much like we did at the March fifth meeting, correct?
That's my understanding. Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you would need a special meeting for that necessarily.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no time sensitivity on the issue now that we've gone through the election and the swearing in. However, we would need an official appointment and vote because if, if she, either way, because her appointment was just for that specified time, so, but we can just do that at a normal board meeting.
So Jason, back to your question, and it sounds like if she's willing to do it, then we can just have it as an agenda item at our next board meeting.
Great. It gives us a deadline to either Lauren or find someone new.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Right. Okay, so right now, I'm sorry to sidetrack there. We have a motion, a second. Deb, can we get a roll call vote on the March fifth minutes?
So I'm going to go ahead and do that, but I'm also going to say that I'm going to go back and check Barbara Goodman as abstained for the previous votes, and she wasn't here for those minutes. So I apologize for that. Okay. Greg Parrish.
Yes.
Jason Farias.
Yes.
Jill Swayze.
Yes.
And Anthony Lang.
Yes.
And I have Barbara Goodman as abstaining. Vote taken.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda are reports, starting off with the superintendent's report. Dr. Arakilian.
Thank you. I've attached my report there, and I can highlight a few pieces from the report. As far as the return to in-person learning, of course, Lincoln Ackerman has been full in-person K through eight since September. However, I'm very pleased to report that all students in all grades in SAU twenty-one have the opportunity to be in school five days per week as of Monday, March twenty-second.
Great news.
Fantastic news. This is due to the incredible efforts of our teachers, of our administrators, our school nurses, facilities, food service, EAs, and it goes on and on. It takes the entire team in all of our districts to make this happen. And it also takes our families, the parents who follow those, those safety protocols day in and day out, and keep their kids home when they don't feel well, and follow all of those things that help us to stay in person and to, to reopen and increase in-person learning. So I want to make sure the community is, is thanked as well, all of our parents and families, and the kids are certainly, certainly enjoying it and welcoming it. And so we're really happy and excited about that. Of course, we had our election, school board and other elections last week. And of course, we're thrilled to have Barbara Goodman with us and our returning board members for Hampton Falls. We're meeting with all of our new board members at orientation meetings and inviting them to some trainings through NHSBA the first week of May. You'll receive that information, of course, new board members. We, we encourage you to go, but really, as you all know, anyone can go every year. I believe those are the evenings of March third and sixth, so you can choose one to go to. It's always good to go and get a refresher straight from, straight from NHSBA. I believe those will be Zoom meetings, so very accessible. Of course, we have our joint board meeting next week. We're looking forward to an equity presentation that, you know, Dr. Hobbs and I will, will frame and facilitate that presentation. However, we're really thrilled to have teachers, administrators, some alumni, support us and contribute to that presentation as well. So we're really looking forward to that, and the planning is underway. Of course, we'll have an adoption of policies. We need to talk about the calendar for next year, February twenty twenty-two winter break. We need to propose a change to the joint board. We'll be talking about the interim superintendent goals and evaluation. And I believe we're also bringing forward our project, our windows and siding project for the SAU. So that's pretty much it for my report. I'm happy to, to address any questions.
Caroline, quick, quick question. It's, it's this weekend that the teachers, SAU twenty-one, is, they're getting their first vaccinations? Is that next weekend?
That's this weekend, yes. So we have, we have an entire closed pod for our teachers, all of our staff. This weekend, it'll be at Winnicott High School. Lincoln Ackerman will have a designated time when, when they come in. I believe it's Saturday afternoon. And we're just over the moon thrilled. It's like Christmas. People are just so excited and grateful, and so we can't wait. We're thrilled that, you know, it's really as a result of the, the regional public health network and our fire department. So Hampton Falls is sending, I think it's five or six EMTs to, to work with us. So it's, it's mainly the Hampton Fire Department, twenty, twenty people from there and five or six from both North Hampton and Hampton Falls. So it's, it's going to be an incredible event. We're really looking forward to it.
Oh, great, great to hear that.
Awesome. That's great. Well done.
Thank you.
Dr. Arakilian, how many new board members across the district after the elections?
There are six, six new board members. One here, two at North Hampton, two at Seabrook. No, one at Seabrook, two at Winnicott.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Dr. Arakilian? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Hobbs.
Hey, it's good to give a report again. By the way, public thanks to Dr. Arakilian for all the work on the vaccinations. That is not a small project, and I've kind of seen the backend from our office. So public thank you to you for setting that up, and it's, it's great for our kids. It's great for our staff, and kudos to you. So my written report. So, um, my written reports in the, in board docs, but, um, I'll just cover the, the highlights. First of all, I've, I've got a kinda, uh, transition into past tense, we did have our March 9th, uh, professional development day, SAU wide. We, we had planned it really well, um, we had a discussion in the morning, probably 380, close to 400 people actually participated in the discussion, it's pretty mind blowing if you think about it, across the SAU. Um, we had facilitators from UNH and Keene State, um, but additionally, we had staff members who, who acted as facilitators. So we had roughly 28 to 30, um, of our staff members that, um, facilitated breakout rooms and, and kinda fostered discussion. Um, so we had a, we had a really good morning talking about race, equity, um, and, and how we helps all kids succeed at SAU 21. And then that broke out into buildings towards the later morning. Um, the afternoon was, we had a, a guest speaker, a keynote speaker, um, his name was Joel Cat, and he, he really focused on social emotional learning, which picks up with a lot of Hampton Falls initiatives, and, um, really spoke to connectedness, in my opinion, and taking care of one another and taking care of ourselves. And I think, I think that's a good and timely theme for, um, the return to school in a lot of our districts. So that went off without a hitch. We've got trimester three transition coming up, obviously. Um, part, uh, side effect of the whole RLA program is we, we've actually been able to uh, consolidate and standardize our calendar in terms of grade capture and in terms of the power school, uh, piece of grades. So I just, uh, attached the calendar for your, uh, for your information. Um, as we unwind the Remote Learning Academy, um, obviously, there's gonna be transfers back to our schools, and we wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page for reporting, and all kids, um, got the feedback that they needed in the, in these transitions. So that's that, uh, certification updates, believe it or not, it is certification season. Uh, we have 114 faculty members that are up for research, um, so, uh, Deb, thank you. But Deb and I are working on making sure that our staff have hours documented and, uh, making sure that those hours are in the right endorsements, uh, so that we're kosher with the DOE. Beth, you're good, by the way, I approved you for certification. And then, uh, lastly, uh, this is a larger topic, but I wanted to make sure it didn't fall off our plates. Um, we did, um, complete the math program review in May of last year. Um, I'm sure it was shadowed by a lot of other events, um, but I did wanna link it back up to this agenda and, um, just make sure that everybody had it at their fingertips. Um, obviously, we're gonna, the data's gonna be a little muddy for the next, uh, few months, maybe to even a year. Um, but we've got a really good outline and a really good, good bones for a math program review. Um, as we move forward, I think we're going to approach world language with a similar structure and take a look at some of our opportunities, uh, across the SAU with respect to world language, what we, where we are with seat time, where we are, where, where we are with staffing and, um, individual programs in our schools. So I'm looking forward to actually getting started on some of that curriculum work as we, as we move forward. So I'll pause there, if anybody has any questions, I'm hap- happy to answer.
Uh, Dave's Greg, I have a question, a couple actually, uh, going back to the certification updates. Those numbers seem high to me, or are those normal numbers?
Um, they seem high to me, no, they, they're normal, um, that's, that's kinda where we are in terms of number of staff. Um, the thing that's surprising though is, um, we have a lot of staff that have multiple endorsements. Um, so we gotta make sure that not only are they, they're endorsed in what they're teaching, but a lot of them have admin endorsements or, you know, special ed certs, um, that we wanna make sure that we, we cover as well. So I think I put it in there, it's like 114 faculty members, but 172 certifications that we gotta worry about.
Okay, and what happens if they don't get certified?
Uh, well, uh, employment and contract is contingent upon certification, so. Yeah, we incentivize it pretty well. Look, the good news is, we have, we have frankly very robust professional development opportunities here throughout the SAU. Um, and if, if, if you're participating in them, and, um, you're taking advantage of some of the opportunities, uh, that we, we provide, it's pretty hard not to meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions for?
Yeah, I have a couple with the, with the, with this, um, incredibly, um, just detailed review here of the, the math program. Um, is this the, the guidelines by which you evaluated each program, are the, are those driven by the state? Um, I'm just curious what, you know, I'm looking at the charts, the standards in the back, yes?
Uh, no, no, this is not determined by the state whatsoever, uh, Jason, this is something, so we put together a team um, that really wanted to take a look at the, you know, a lot of things, first of all, what we're doing with respect to math curriculum. Um, but I think there's, there's a layer in there about opportunity. Um, what we're doing to make sure that all of our kids have access to all of our curriculum that we offer here.
Yep.
And, and part of that is looking at our current programming, but also part of that is looking at trajectories throughout the high school. Um, I pulled statewide assessment data, which by now is pretty stale because we didn't offer it last spring. Um, we pulled a lot of enrollment records for Winnicott, um, we made sure we looked at teacher recommendations and some subgroups. Um, you know, socioeconomic subgroups, um, diversity, um, kids with IEP uh, subgroups, and wanted to make sure we gave a robust picture of all students and how they were performing in math. But no, it wasn't prescriptive, it was just something that we came up with as a team.
Um, now taking this, the results, I'm just curious, what's the, the subsequent plan here? Or do, do, does each school take this report and, um, work with it? I'm just curious, with all this good information, wh- what's the plan?
Yeah, first of all, I mean, digesting is step one, right? Because there's a lot there, but in, you'll see, um, I don't know what, how many pages it'd end up being. But towards the end, there are a number of recommendations which we've had to kind of put into place. Um, some of them are scheduling recommendations, some of them receipt time, and some of them are curricular recommendations. Um, but yeah, I, I look forward to working with our curriculum coordinators and those folks to implement, uh, some of the, some of the, um, changes that we saw as necessary.
Great.
Look forward to reading it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Dr. Hobbs. Next on the list, or the agenda would be our principals' report.
Okay, uh, we are. Thank you, and, uh, again, welcome Barbara, I know I sent you a note, but I know how thrilled you were, so congratulations. Um, in terms of, uh, March report, I feel like this is a bit past tense, but, uh, we are in a really good place, it's, we feel very settled. Uh, in terms of COVID, it seems like things have really died down, and we've had a really good, long, steady uh, pace of, of academics, so it's, it's feeling really strong at the end of trimester two. Uh, a lot of kiddos working really, really hard, uh, teachers working really hard. And, uh, we've really turned our focus to our school goals, so tomorrow we have a professional development day. And we are going to really make a push to move our, uh, social emotional learning goal forward. Um, as I wrote on the report, and I won't repeat it all, we are, we actually started this before the whole COVID thing hit, so it's been very timely, and, um, we've used it quite a bit this year. And tomorrow, we're gonna have Northeast Passage and their organization that's affiliated with UNH. And what we have done over the past year is developed a common language together as a staff and with our students. Uh, we've married two programs together, the Castle Competencies of SEL, as well as Michelle Garcia Winner. And, uh, you may hear your, uh, children saying some things at home, like, you know, Mom, what's the size of the problem? Or, uh, you know, we, we, uh, body in the group, you know, just to see if you're really listening. So I've had a couple of parents call me about that, which actually is great, because kids are absorbing it, they're using it, and they're, they're hearing it day after day, so we're going to advance, uh, some of that language and turn them into activities that are actually metaphors of what students may, uh, be going through at school. So we use those in our morning meetings, uh, we use them, uh, if we have any disciplinary infractions or with our school guidance counselor, you hear all of us using the language pretty consistently. So I really, um, I'm actually very pleased with, uh, the progress we've made with that, and tomorrow should be a really great day together, uh, we're gonna try to get outside a little bit, it's supposed to be above 16. So we're gonna try to get outside and, uh, mix up our groups of people a little bit, uh, in a healthy way. Uh, so I'll report back on that next month and how we do. Our traditions are continuing in a COVID kind of way, but, uh, our maple sugaring is in full swing with grade four. Uh, Jess Bagley and, uh, Jim Cutting have worked hard to plan out a schedule so that parents can still be involved. Uh, we just do it more often in smaller groups, so, uh, the weather has really cooperated with the up and down temperatures. So, um, it's my hope that we can really plan a good pancake breakfast as well, one of these days with the maple syrup. Uh, I really wanna thank Liz Zaliga and the Mission Impact Group, uh, Mission Impact, if you don't have a child that's, uh, in seventh or eighth grade, they are a group of, uh, community service minded students that, uh, this year, since we really can't get out into nursing homes or really out anywhere, we've turned our spirit inward. And we've always done that, but this year it felt a little bit different, because we knew we had to have moments in the school year where we really needed to lift the spirit in a new and fun way. So, uh, they came up with these winter festivals, and they really, really did a fabulous job with it. We planned it out over almost the entire property and spread a whole pot out. Uh, we had to do it in three different pods, but we spread them all out with, you know, all kinds of games that they came up with that were age appropriate for each of the pods, and, um, a lot of fun spirit, but more importantly, a lot of leadership emerging in our middle schoolers. Uh, they really were fun to watch, and seeing them help one another really, um, it was really fun, um, I, I wish you could have seen it, but it's, it's something I think that will continue each year now. Uh, and I think the younger kids really had a lot of fun with it. Uh, they're also modeling a lot of good middle school behaviors that we really promote within the school, so it's a leadership opportunity. Um, moving forward, we are starting trimester three on Monday. And, uh, we have four students returning from the Remote Learning Academy. We have two, uh, first graders, uh, twins, and we have a fifth grader and a seventh grader. So, uh, we're, we're, we're really pleased that, uh, parents are feeling confident that students can return safely. Uh, for whatever circumstance, they had to be remote, so, uh, we're getting there, we're getting there, and, uh, so we're making provisions for them, and it's my hope, uh, the weather is, is turning warm again, so you will see if you're around, uh, a lot of outdoor learning once again. We'll get our tents back up and all of the spaces around the school, uh, the hockey, the, uh, ice rink is coming down at the end of the week. Uh, once I can pull the team together again, uh, I just wanna give a shout out to Don Stobie and Mike Door, who have been incredible helping me with that thing, we, it was a learning curve, no doubt. But, uh, we got a lot of pleasure out of it, and it's something that will continue over the next couple of years, so. Questions?
Uh, Beth, thank you so much, it is, um, it, it's really been a great year despite. I mean, the way that you have been creative and how the staff have risen, um, it, it's been awesome to see. I know with the winter carnival, my daughter just was so thrilled to be a part of that, and I think they needed the break. Honestly, they needed something else, you know, to focus on and have a little fun together, so that was great.
I agree, uh, your daughter did a fabulous job.
Uh, thanks, um, she enjoyed it. I, I have two questions, and they may be premature, so if they are, I'm, I'm completely comfortable with you telling me to back off, and we'll talk about that in the future. Um.
Let me guess, I know the first question, no, go ahead.
Do, try. Um, well, the first question is, um, a little selfish, uh, and, and it's sort of about eighth grade send-off. Um, and it may just be that communications haven't started on that. While everybody has suffered, they missed out on two pretty significant middle school milestones. Um, and, and I would love for us to creatively think about opportunities, um, to sort of bid their time at LAS farewell with a proper send-off, or, or some, you know, building activity that they could have. Um, because COVID hit, you know, right before DC, and, and obviously, New York wasn't an option.
Right.
I, I don't know if there's been thoughts on that yet.
You're only a little bit premature, um, I think, I think right now, I mean, I think you can feel the momentum. Uh, staff is going to be vaccinated over the weekend, and then again, four weeks from now, and then two weeks after that, uh, will be fully vaccinated, which I believe is right around May 4th. Um, I have had two meetings with our seventh and eighth grade team and have talked quite a bit about what could the end of the year look like for these students. We realize the loss of traditional trips that they were not able to go on, so we're very aware of that. Um, we don't have anything definitive yet, so I will definitely report out on that again. But, uh, we are definitely thinking along those lines. And I, I think though, as this herd immunity, as they call it on the news, as it begins to grow, it's my hope that we can find something really appropriate for them, I know they won't be vaccinated, but, um, we'll, we'll find something, we don't know yet. I know we have talked a little bit about, uh, graduation type send-offs, and we are not close to that yet, but it's my hope, uh, we don't even have a gym anymore, we, uh, so we need to keep that in mind. So it will be something outside.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the thinking.
Yeah, and we will keep a lot of our traditions, uh, intact, I have put together a group to do yearbook. Um, I've been taking the pictures internally pretty much all year long, so, uh, it'll be a, a yearbook of candids, but we will pay my, uh, a lot of attention to the eighth grade, I'll do their portraits and things like that. Um, in terms of other things, we do the tribute ceremony, we're still gonna probably make that into a video. Um, whether we do it outside and are able to speak, but we'll also create the video, because a lot of parents appreciated that last year, because it's a real keepsake. So, more, more to come.
Great, thank you, um, and, and I guess somewhat related, um, I've been probably inundating myself with too much news as usual. And while, you know, into the summer, hopefully, as adults will all be vaccinated, there, you know, the children may need to continue to be socially distanced. So, you know, into the start of next school year, so I'm wondering if we need, I don't expect answers, but we need to start having conversations around what that might look like if, if and hopefully when enrollment rises, or, you know, what that means for us as a board to put pressure on to get that gym in a viable place. Um, so just starting to sort of plant that seed before, you know, where, while we have some room to think about it still.
Uh, the gym is definitely a, a concern, uh, we will need it for a lot of reasons next year. Um, and it will not be so that we can leave all our furniture in there, because it's my hope that we, our classrooms will look a lot different in September. Um, I don't know if you wanna speak more to that, Matt, I don't have any information on it.
Well, I mean, it's, it's obviously gonna be an evolving process, so, um, you know, I'd, I'd love to say that we will achieve herd immunity at a certain date, but we frankly just, we, we can't, we can't estimate when that will be available, I mean, up until that point, um, we will be limited as to how we will function, um, we will need to, you know, um, look at wearing masks, social distance, um, the use of the gym will be limited. Um, and both due to the air handler and due to storage potentially. So, um, these are all things that we're gonna have to work through, um, and, and we'll, you know, we will, we'll certainly plan for. Um, you know, as far as actually addressing the air handler, um, that's, I mean, that's, that's a warrant article, I mean, we don't, um, we, as you know, we went out to bid, and along with every other school and organization in the country, because everyone's, um, everyone are, is trying to upgrade their HVAC system. So the bids came in incredibly expensive, which we determined wasn't viable to, um, to bring forth as a warrant article, so, um, we are hopeful that, um, you know, as the market um, changes, that that will improve and be able to, um, bring forth, um, a solution, um, this coming year. Um, but that, that's not something that we can immediately address.
Yeah, no, totally appreciate that, and I wasn't expecting us to, but if there are certain things that we can help with as a board or start to think through creatively, you know, we're buying ourselves a little time if we start thinking about it sooner than later, and if we don't need to rely on those options, all the better. But if we've at least done a little planning in advance. But if we've at least done a little planning in advance, you know, we, hopefully we won't be in triage mode.
I can add to that, that we're, we're, we're pretty much at the mercy of the CDC guidelines. So, you know, I think Dr. Fauci has made some hints lately that distancing could be relaxed soon. But you're right in that, you know, although adults will widely have access to the vaccine as early as May and June, you know, the, the clinical trials for even just teenagers are still underway. So we don't know at what point, you know, to your point, Jill, we don't know to, at what point we'll have, you know, children will have access, you know. Right now, I think the Pfizer vaccine is approved for age 16 and up. However, you know, our, our middle school students, that's possibly the fall and then younger students possibly later. So it's, it's true that we're probably looking at some sort of safety protocols for at least the first half of the school year. Not sure what that is yet.
But it's part of it is fully under getting the information. So, I mean, we're, we're starting to see research. So there's been studies that have now been put in place as far as effectiveness of social distancing where there are questions as to, or I've seen some reports where they've, they've seen results of three foot social distancing being just as effective as six foot social distancing. And that's one study. But you know, that, that's, that's being conducted now. So we're starting to, they're starting to pull it together, this research. And then we can make decisions based on, you know, ultimately as Dr. Eric Kalian mentioned, CDC guidelines, but it'll, that'll be informed by the, that information gathering, the, the studies that are coming out. Because again, and we know a whole lot more, but there's still, there's still a lot to be learned. We're still in the midst of a pandemic. So once, once we have more information, then we react accordingly. And I think we've, we've done a pretty good job thus far. I mean, it's, I certainly want to plan as opposed to go into triage, but there will certainly be an element of, we're gonna, you know, do it as we go to a certain extent. Unfortunately, just because it's the world we live in.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt, it's Greg. I know you're on top of, top of these things, but is there any grant money? Or federal funding that would help us offset some of the cost of an air handler system?
Yeah. So yeah, so as you know, there, there was a third stimulus package that was just passed, which did, does provide additional funding for schools. Now, you know, the way, the way our SAU is structured, we are segmented by school district. So each individual school district is apportioned funding via the CARES-ESR. Now, unfortunately Hampton Falls only received, I think like $9,000 from the first stimulus package, $0 in the second package, and I anticipate it'll be $0 in the third package. Now that's opposed to the $3 million that our other districts are, we anticipate are receiving from the, from the third stimulus package. So we're kind of, unfortunately, because we aren't necessarily, you know, we're not fully one SAU, we're so segmented, that money can't be shared. It's not like we can say, pull that money from a different district and spend it in Hampton Falls. But so that's where the funding is and that's where we're seeing it from the federal government. It's just Hampton Falls is not recognizing that. But that'd be the first thing, if, if Hampton Falls was receiving the funds, that'd be the first thing I'd look to utilize it for. I just don't anticipate us getting anything. So.
Okay. Thank you. We kind of got sidetracked there, but does anyone have any additional questions for Beth regarding the principal's report?
I just have one, and I actually am also not going to ask the question that you expect because your vaccines totally made it a main thing and we could push it off. But in the short term, I know that there's a lot of side effects with first dosages. And I know this may have been a more of a Dr. Eric Kalian question. Is there a plan in place for the start of next week and substitutes and any of that?
Thank you. We, we, we actually are scheduled for Saturday early and the side effects don't seem to take place with the first dose, but they do with the second. And it's, the second dose, we're scheduled for a Friday. It'll be after students leave at some point. So I think we're going to be okay. But thank you for asking, Matt.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Beth.
Welcome.
Thanks, Beth.
Welcome.
Okay, onward and upward. Financial reports, Matt.
Thank you. So we have included the year to dates expenditure and revenue reports. As I've, I've mentioned in previous board meetings, we're in real good shape in regard to our budget. Most of our accounts are tracking under budget. I will take a moment. There have been no real change, big changes, but I will summarize some of the variances. Since we do have a new school board member and, and Barbara, if you do want to go more in depth with, you know, where we stand, I'm happy to, you know, review it with you offline or please ask any questions tonight. That you may have. So you know, there are a few areas where we're, we're tracking under budget. That includes our, some of our salary accounts, substitutes, because we're not really bringing substitutes in, student activities, because again, we're limited with what we can do as far as, you know, sports and other activities. You know, special education is actually, you know, as a, as a department, as a whole, we're $20,000 under budget. Now that's something that we always, as you know, it can be a highly variable volatile account. So that's something we, you know, obviously will monitor as we go through the remainder of the school year, but we're in pretty good shape with special education. You know, there's, there's been, you know, across all of our districts, there's been, you know, more, more of our teachers are participating in the tuition reimbursement program per their CBA. So we're over budget with tuition reimbursement, which is, you know, I think is part of it is because of the online offerings as we've been during the pandemic. But that is per their, their CBA, which they're entitled to. You know, we in our buildings departments where we're $71,000 over budget. Now that will come down in some of those accounts, but you know, we've, we've been, we've been under with, you know, electricity and heating. You know, we were, we're under in, you know, our renovations, however, that will, we do plan on doing expending those, so that will come down. So that included the LED lighting upgrades. It included the gym scoreboard. And then some STEM lab equipment improvements. So those are all items that we, we will be doing before the end of the school year. We also intend to purchase a, a stage that's more portable than the one that we have. Really does not work because it's too huge and heavy to move on that gym floor. This will also give us the ability to move it between the cafeteria in the gymnasium for, for, for various purchases, I mean, purposes. You know, we have a significant savings and benefits and that's, that's kind of a part of the reason is employee election changes from, from prior year. Some of it is with the lower salaries. That's, then there's a corresponding decrease in, in the FICA and retirements. Those, those, those are percentages of the salary. So, so we're under budget in those areas. You know, and then we, you know, then we have food service where we're likely going to go over budget. You know, because of the decreased participation this year, you know, with, with the number of students that we have in school. So, you know, by, by and large, we're tracking really well for the budget. We will have some, some pretty significant funds to, at the end of the year to either look to, you know, perhaps, I know the school board was interested in potentially investing in an electronic sign. So I know that's going to be on the agenda for our first facilities committee meeting is to explore that option again. So that could potentially be an investment. Otherwise, as always, we're, we're, we're looking to be fiscally responsible and return them, you know, maximum amount of funds back to the town. Because on the revenue side, so when you look at the revenue report, we also have, you know, unanticipated revenue. So that, we did receive through the state, the, you know, the public, public school response funding, supplemental response funding. That was $42,000 that we did not anticipate. We received some refunds from our insurers. So that'd be health insurance, property liability due to decreased claims. You know, we were seeing some, we were receiving a little, a little more special education aid. So we're going to have a pretty good balance at the end of the year to either, you know, look at potentially making a few small investments or return to the town to offset assessment. So, and again, I already spoke a little bit about the federal funding. I do, we have not been notified of any allocation of funds from the third stimulus package. However, based on the second stimulus package and that, and that formula that they determine what school districts will receive, I'm just anticipating that Hampton Falls will not receive any funds. However, that, that is not final yet. We have not been formally notified of such. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Matt, it's Greg. I have a couple of questions. Let's start on the revenue report. Is there a timeframe with which the revenues that we received, the 42,000 we received from the state must be spent? Or is that something that we carried over?
No. So that rolls into that, that's, that's part of the calculation for the unreserved fund balance that we return back to the town. So that's, again, that's the fiscal school year. So as of June 30th, if funds have not been spent or encumbered, then that will be included in the unreserved fund balance that will be returned back.
He froze up there. Greg, on return, th- those funds have to be used towards anything COVID related. Is that correct? We have to denote that? The 42,000?
Sorry. So did I, did I break up earlier? Did you hear?
No, I, I broke up. You're, you're fine. You answered the question. Thank you.
Okay. So the, there's a, as far as any COVID related funding from, from the federal and state government, it's pretty open. So we have a, we have a great deal of latitude to utilize for for many purposes. So, you know, ostensibly, it's got to be COVID related, but the definition is very broad.
Greg, I don't mean to hijack that. I
No, no, go ahead, Jay.
I tell me what your thoughts are. I think that this, Matt, I'm sure you're with, you're, you're planning on, you know, not leaving a dime of this behind, I hope. You know, and you're, and generating some plan of attack for utilizing every, every drop of this. I hope if not, then I would be more than welcome to, happy to at least engage in a conversation to, to, to do that. Something to think about.
Yeah. So that's, so that's a philosophical question that, that the board is going to need to make a decision on. So, so no. To answer your question, no, we don't, we do not plan to use every penny because it's, you know, typically we budget funds in order to operate the school for specific purposes. And we, and we make that very clear on how we're going to spend those funds. So it would really take a, and then any excess funds, any savings that we recognize, we, it's our obligation to return to the town because it wasn't, it wasn't used in the manner that we intended to use. Now that being said, the board does have that, that authority to, to use any savings, which in this case we should, we will have savings for another purpose. So, but we as a school district can't unilaterally decide that, oh, we've got $100,000, we're going to go buy a bunch of smart boards or, you know, computers or something. That's, that's something that, that, that would have to come from the school board. And typically we, you know, the town votes on a budget and, and the appropriation of funds for that express purpose. So I, it's not always, it's, it's not necessarily a good idea to then use any savings for some other purpose. Just from an optics perspective. However, you know, if there are a list of projects, we can certainly look at doing some of them.
Okay. That
Did I answer your question?
It does. It does. And I would love to have a, you know, a conversation. I, I see where you're getting at. And, and I, and I appreciate you, you did a lot of work with the budget to, when you say the optics of it.
We just want to maintain trust.
Right, 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 right.
If we're going to use the funds for something we didn't intend to, we want to make it very clear to the community. How are we using those funds and why?
So theoretically, I'll, I'll leave at this and Greg, you can finish your question. We could theoretically apply that to an HVAC system, which would better the, you know, circulation, i.e. the health of our students. That would be actually a plausible use of the funds or a partial use.
Yeah, absolutely.
I get your hesitation.
I don't know if we'll have that much, but theoretically, I think that would be, we'd have very good justification to use those funds if, for something like that.
I'll, I'll stop there.
Matt, back to the expense report, page two. Tuition reimbursement. I know we just had our budget voted on. I know there's some formulas you use to come up with this $4,000 for this particular budget and the budget that was just voted on. Any way to foresee what this expense will be in the coming school year?
Yeah, this is, this is one of those accounts that's pretty highly variable based on, you know, we do our best to look at our, our, our teachers and say, hey, you know, we have a bunch of young teachers that are looking to go up the pay scale or they have, they want to get their masters or and then we can kind of budget accordingly. Or we have, you know, some very experienced teachers that are already at the top pay scale. They don't, you know, they're, they're not looking to get a masters or CAGS and then budget accordingly. But, you know, we've had some turnover. We are likely going, we have some turnover this year that we're going to be hiring for next year. And those are likely going to be, you know, newer teachers that are looking to take courses so that we are likely under budgeted for that account next year, if I had to guess.
Yeah. And, and this year we're fine with everything going on at $6,000. I know you'll find, or we have, but in a typical school year, that might not be the case for us. And I just didn't know, do we take a different look next year during budget season or later this year in budget season to review that number a little differently? That's all.
Yeah. I mean, the, I think the, the best we can do is look at our, you know, our current, you know, faculty and then look at historicals and then make a, a estimate. But that's, and that's, I mean, as you know, that's the budget process is we're, we're making, we're budgeting 12 to 18 months in advance. We're making our best guesses based on the information we have. There's, you know, I, I'm not terribly concerned about that account. There's going to be some accounts where it works to our favor, some accounts that work. You know, that, that we're going to be under. So it's, you know, it, it kind of is what it is. But we'll, we'll certainly take a close look at it next But we'll, we'll certainly take a close look at it next year, depending on particularly if we're tracking our, you know, next year for already tracking below significant.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Uh, does anybody have any additional questions for Matt? Jay, you also?
I'm going to save it.
Okay.
Uh, I'll just, yeah, I think we'll, we'll talk to it at another board meeting. Just, I guess, one, Matt, the, the trust, the hundred thousand dollar, I just had it and I lost it. Um, to the, to the expendable trust. Is that split up between the four trusts or is that my misreading? How is that allocated?
So, yeah, so we, um, so we have, I believe, three
War.
expendable trusts that were on the ballot this year.
Right.
We, we funded, um, special education expendable trust, the, um, health, health insurance and the building maintenance.
Building maintenance, yeah.
So it was split up, um, you know, I can pull it up. I don't know off the top of my head. Um, I think, I think we may have done fifty in building maintenance and then twenty five and twenty five, but I can
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay, great. Um, and I think, you know, I'm, I, I think I know where you're, you're headed, Jason. Um, that, that building maintenance expendable trust, we could, um, we could potentially utilize for, um, an HVAC system or a partial agent. So we could, you know, if we could potentially split funding with it, with that trust and then potentially with some savings, if we have enough at the end of the year, um, you know.
I think, yeah, I, it, there are a lot of mechanisms and, and, and possible scenarios we can go through. I would vote, um, Greg, that we could, you know, I know we have some other items that I definitely want to speak to. So I, I, um, I, I say we would table that conversation. We'll have the conversation in the facility meetings, Matt. Uh, and we'll report back to you, but I, I, there are definitely some options. I'm getting the sense with the funds that have come in and, and, which is a good thing. I think we're, we can make this work. We had talked about a cost share, but I think it's, um, for the board's sake, we can have a designated time slot. And, you know, just give ourselves half an hour to, you know, spitball some ideas and look at what we have for reasonable, defensible, solutions to cost, cost share and those, those sort of things. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. And the other, the other thing I'll just mention is, um, we also have, have time crunch. If you're seriously looking at something large, like an HVAC system. Um, so those, those funds at the, at this end of the year, it, they expire June thirtieth. So we have to go out to bid. You have to aw- award, award the bid by, you know, the, by June, um, which that's a, that's a, it's not, I mean, it's possible, but it's, it's a tight turnaround. I, Alan is working with, um, you know, is, is work, has been working with some HVAC companies to try to, um, find an alternate solution that might be cheaper. Um, you know, we, we are exploring some other opportunities, but I think that's a good discussion for the facilities committee. When we, when we meet, and we'll, we'll, so we'll schedule that sooner than later.
Thanks, Matt.
There's no, no other questions. Uh, thanks, Matt. Appreciate it. Okay, next on the item, uh, agenda is public comment. Um, so we'll open the floor to public comment if there are any. I think all you have to do, if you have a comment, is to raise your hand. Hearing or seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Uh, next item on the agenda is continuing business and our superintendent search update.
Sure, um, I can speak to that. Jason, if I drop anything, just, uh, just let me know.
Yep.
Um, not, not a whole lot to report right now. Um, we are kind of in a holding pattern. I'll, I'll go back to kind of the beginning of March. Um, the week of March first, which was a couple of weeks ago, uh, we really went through the process of determining characteristics and qualities of our desired superintendent. Um, in order to do that, we had the forums, we had student forums, uh, community forums and faculty forums. And of course, uh, you guys did receive the digital survey. Hopefully that went to, um, all those constituents plus the, the joint board as well. Um, so we were in the process of ki- kind of developing that picture of an ideal candidate. Um, last week, which was the week of the eighth, uh, we did interview training with the Brian group. And, um, and really kind of made the executive decision to, uh, do two things. One is increase the number of platforms that we're advertising on. And, uh, the other one is extending the deadline, uh, to make sure that we were getting, uh, the candidate pool that we wanted. So the, um, position now closes on April third. And, and like I said, we're kind of in a holding pattern at the moment, um, before we're able to kind of evaluate the, uh, applications that come in.
Yeah, I, I, I'll add to that. I, I'm, I'm, I'm generally very, uh, generally satisfied as to the, the content of the criteria. I think it, with a high percentage includes everyone's, uh, desires on the, on Hampton Falls, Falls School Board. Beth, the, um, we did include, um, one of the criteria that we will evaluate against is the, is the, the teaching, uh, background. So I know we spoke about that and you said a few things. Um, so I think we did a good job. I know it, it, the joint search committee, um, there's a lot of factors going into this, as you can imagine. Um, but I do think, uh, your voices and your desires are, are, are well represented in the, the, the criteria with which, um, we'll, we'll use to, to evaluate these candidates.
Does anyone have any questions for Jay or David regarding the search update for the superintendent?
Appreciate all the work you're doing.
Pleasure.
Thanks, incur. Thank you. Thank you, David and Jay. Appreciate it. Uh, next item on the agenda on our new business is teacher presentation conversation.
Oh, muted.
Greg, we can't hear you. And now he's not.
Greg. We can't, can't hear you.
Yeah. How's this?
Oh, you're
There we go.
You're back.
So much for my phone being a hotspot. Um, the teach presentation, very informative and I've always enjoyed them, uh, with the Zoom meetings that we're now participating in. I'm sure that makes it, uh, very challenging. So what I'd like to do is just have a conversation on the board. Uh, get an idea, what types of presentations or topics you're interested in. And then ha- have this conversation with Beth to, um, get her thoughts, maybe, uh, identify some sort of a timeline here. Um, I will, uh, Beth, I don't know if you want to add to this.
I'll add to it as you, as you talk.
Okay. Um, so that being said, uh, the last presentation we had, I believe, was from Lisa Woodruff and Liz Liga. Oh, and I forget the topic.
Competency-based education.
And, and it was very informative. Um, I, I may even ask if we could redo that one, uh, when we get to this point. But, uh, that being said, does the board have any ideas, what, you know, what types of presentations would you be interested in seeing or topics?
I, I I think that, um, I'd, I'd like to see what the, 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 give the teachers the, uh, the ability to come up with, you know, maybe give us a, a list of what they're proposing. Give the teachers the freedom to, um, really present i- i- and items or some subject matter that they feel strongly about in their, in their own, in the, in the way that they feel they can do, um, you know, uh, best service to, and, and I think the teachers are pretty well, uh, no, I know they are very well accustomed to the Zoom. So I think there, there's still an opportunity to do this and do it effectively. Yes, it's not the same as in person, but, um, um, I'm pretty, I'm pretty open personally with, with subject matter.
Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd agree with Jay and I, and I think, you know, as, um, at LAS turns over and we welcome new teachers, I, I know that there are adjustments to some of sort of the, the curriculum and some of the traditional topics that were maybe becoming outdated or there's new opportunities to introduce new topics in curriculum. And, and I, I would be interested in, in sort of being updated on those types of things. You know, what are the key learnings for the various grade levels and, um, you know, what's shifted? I probably keep my mindset a little outdated in a lot of that, quite frankly. And to serve on the board, I'd, I'd like to be, um, a better part of, of understanding what's going on.
Anyone else?
Quickly, what comes to mind, Greg, you know, uh, Dr. Obbs, your, your report on the math, um, uh, your math report there, I, it just popped into my head. It'd be, it'd be great to see, you know, okay, what is LAS doing, uh, with respect to, uh, implementing the suggestions from your report? Um, and maybe do a follow-up and say, how, how do we, how did they do? How do we do, you know, type thing? You know, stuff of, things of that nature where, you know, we give them their task. Beth's given them certain goals and such to, to reach and how did they do? How do they achieve those?
Beth, any thoughts?
Um, I actually have quite a few thoughts. I think there are a lot of great things going on at LAS. We only have three board meetings, uh, for the remainder of the school year. And I, I, I actually think doing a Zoom presentation from home, if you uh, are a parent that just got home and have a lot of little kids, might be difficult. So I, I would suggest we start off with the presentation from Lisa and Liz last year and repeat it. Um, I think it was really instructional. I thought it was, it really promoted the understanding of the, the whole basis of our school, which is move, which we've moved into competency-based education. And I think maybe a little bit more on the growth mindset. And then perhaps we could pull together something, uh, about our SEL goals. And then maybe next year in the fall, look into, because I think it'll be a whole lot more effective in person. And I know we'll be in person in the fall because I'm an optimist, but, um, I don't know. I also want to, I, I, I would think, uh, that teachers, if this is a voluntary thing that they would be doing, I, I certainly wouldn't want to put somebody in front of a board that felt incredibly uncomfortable with it. I remember those days as a teacher. Um, so I think I'd have to go back with them and, and find, find the, a balance of um, things that they would like to share and, um, probably get back to. I haven't talked to any staff about anything like this, so. I know that we had a few good presentations from, uh, teachers last year with Amy Middleton and, um, uh, Lisa and Liz, and, uh, we were scheduled to have Mike Queen and do something on STEM. But, uh, we'd have to give that some space now because he's been out of that for a year.
I like your SEL, uh, idea. I, I am trying to wrap my head around this. I've been reading about this recently and there, there's a lot to it. Uh, so an SEL presentation to break it down a little bit would be very helpful, I think. And with the competency, those are the two things that we push this year with, with everything that's going on, were the two things we were going to continue to move forward with and focus on in the school year. And so, um, that would be great, in my opinion. What, w- with the board's permission, what I, what I'd like to suggest is, um, ask Beth if she could go back to the staff, kind of take their temperature regarding topics, how they feel about this. Um, I, I don't want anyone to come in front of the board if they feel uncomfortable either, Beth. But I do think it's important for the board to understand some of the programs that are taking place inside the building, outside of meetings with a little bit more meat and potatoes to it, um, than we get here.
I think, I think we could find that balance.
Okay. Okay. So if the board's happy with that or okay with that, uh, let's ask Beth to go back to the staff and maybe she can come up with some ideas and, and, uh, take a look at, uh, uh, some timelines here. Is that good with everyone?
Yeah, that, that's good with me. And I, I would also add that I, I don't see the need for things to be formal per se. I mean, if someone wants to come and tell us about this new idea that they're excited about and they want to introduce to their class, I don't need to see a slide on it. I'm just happy to hear them talk about it. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're doing so much work that I hope, um, is giving them these opportunities. And it would be really nice to know that they're realizing that. Um, and, and it was a lot that I got in the PTO because it was a lot of asking for money on individual things. But, um, I think on a different scale, it would be nice to know that, you know, be, because we meet monthly, it created some opportunity for them to bring some new, um, you know, not the, not in a pat on the back sort of way, but I hope that we're, we're offering teachers a little freedom and flexibility to be creative.
Well, and, and support. I, I think that, you know, when they're talking about things that, uh, they're excited about, that they aspire to, they're, uh, you know, motivated to really go above and beyond, then it's fun to share. But you know, Jill, I could add an incentive and they could still ask you for money.
Well, we've already got the library on our docket to move forward. So sure, come and ask. Doesn't mean they'll get it, but doesn't hurt to ask.
Well, the PTO always gives it. Come on.
Oh, I know.
I, I hope it's, yeah, I, I want to reiterate, it's more of a celebration of what they're doing.
Yes.
Uh, I get to see certain little tidbits with, obviously through my kids' eyes and when they're, um, but I, I just really want to emphasize, this is really for them to, you know, and for us to celebrate what they're doing, if they, you know, have the time to put something like this together.
Right.
Yeah, I, I'm just to add that I think the comfort level is going to dovetail very nicely with some of the initiatives that are going on anyway. Um, so, yeah, I don't, I don't think that'll be an issue. I think it'll naturally come together.
Well, and I lo- I love the way that this is being framed. Uh, there are a lot of great things that, uh, are very worthy of celebrating and, um, complimenting a lot of hard work. So, um, I don't know, this board already feels better. So it's, it's, I think we're going to have a great year, but I, I think there are a lot of fun things to share. So we'll, we'll get to work on it and find the right balance.
Okay.
And thanks for this approach. I, 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 I think they would feel honored.
Thanks. Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, next item on the list on the agenda, why do I call it this? It's the hiring process review. Little background here for Anthony and Barbara. Uh, Anthony, I don't think you were on the board when this took place. Uh, last year we had a hire. There was a little confusion with the process. Uh, I think the confusion, um, existed just because the board didn't understand the process. Dr. R. Killian is my, the third superintendent I've worked with. And each superintendent has gone about the hiring process in their own way. I looked in the policy manual to see if we had anything defined and what the hiring process should be, and there's nothing in our policies. I don't know if there should be. It's just, I looked, I didn't see anything. That being said, what I'm hoping to have tonight is a conversation so that we can eliminate some of this confusion. One, what is the board member or board's role in the hiring process, if at all? And then, um, what kind of information can come from the hiring process back to the board? So that we can make, uh, the, the decisions we need to make. So, that being said, uh, does anybody have any starting points of discussion? And I froze.
Uh, Greg, I'll start. Um, yeah, I, thank you for br- bringing this to the agenda. I would just, um, and this is my personal preference. If, um, wo- would love to see a board member part of the process earlier on. Um, it, well, just through the process when, um, for, maybe not the initial screening, but, um, to be integrated into that, because when we get a member to vote upon, it's, i- it's, um, how do I want to say, it's not, there's no depth to our knowledge of that person. And I would, um, the thought is, in in an effort to to gain a better understanding of the 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 person that we're voting on, ultimately, we should be part of that process. Now, where that, how we define that, we can, we can talk about that some more. But, you know, that would be my opening, opening remark.
Anyone else?
Dr. Arkilien, what, what do you envision as the board member's role in the process? Because I know in the the example that Greg's referring to, last year, we were given very little information through which to approve. And and I know I found that frustrating to have a very limited amount of information to make a decision on.
Thank you. And I I hear that loud and clear as far as the the board. I think where this is coming from is that the board is asking for and would benefit from more information. So I definitely appreciate, you know, that request and the the desire to to know more about the candidates that are brought to you. I think that I that we can do a better job displaying and explaining and providing feedback about the person's background and the whole process. As far as how we do this across the SAU, just for for some context, it's, it is consistent across the whole SAU that we invite board members to admin, all administrative searches. So all the searches for directors, principals, assistant principals, obviously, as the SAU team, we always invite board members. Sometimes board members are available, sometimes they're not available, that's okay. But that invitation is always extended. I would, I would recommend that, you know, that our, you know, the law is that the superintendent needs to make a recommendation to the board. And then the board is 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 the body that hires the employees. So the start of the process is at the building level. The teachers, the staff, and the the principal or the director or both create committees. But that's the very beginning of the process. They create search committees. And they know what they're looking for. They know the best fit for the culture of the school. I would caution the board of, you know, and I think you're already sensitive to this as far as getting involved too early. Because, you know, right at the start of a committee search, the the teachers are, you know, they're sharing their own experiences and their own thoughts and opinions and beliefs with each other. And I would want to keep that comfort level. And I want them to know that we trust them in their, in their process. And logistically, all of, all of that piece happens during the school day. And then towards the end of the process, that's when there are many levels to the process. The next piece is calling references. So after the search committee, the interview committee does all of that piece, looking for the candidate, posting, discussing, interviewing, generating questions, meeting with the the candidates and interviewing. Then it goes, you know, there are two or three maybe candidates, and the principal or the director or both will make those calls to those references. They put the whole packet together. Then it comes to the SAU, and the superintendent interviews the finalists, so one or two or three. So at that point, I'm interviewing people, I'm talking to, to these, these finalists, determining where they are, what what are their expectations? Because I want to make sure, whatever I'm recommending to the board, you know, there are no surprises. I wouldn't want to bring someone to you in a public where, you know, we all interview them in non-public, it's a, it's a lovely interview. And then we go back and talk about, about, you know, numbers, and it's all off. That would be a total waste of your time. So we don't make decisions before they come to the board. But we, we, we work very hard to create a process and do our legwork and then and then bring you those recommendations. And then, as I said, ultimately, you hire. So as far as educating, involving the board more, I think that, you know, we could, we could infuse more of the process with you in the board meeting. So it could be the case that we we provide more than that one page nomination form. You know, that's not a lot for you to go on. I think we do put in the packet of the individual, so that's there. But but I think we haven't been explaining it very well to the board in the past. And that's something that, you know, if you had that context, I think that would be, that would be very helpful. So that's, that's my perspective on that.
Can I add something to that, Caroline? I think last year, when that was, for some of you, your first meeting, it also was one of our first virtual meetings. And another part of this process is normally when we are, the superintendent brings a candidate forward based on all the work that we did in the hiring committee, the person usually comes to the meeting and you meet them. And I I think that was another element that was missing. You know, that's happened with every person before. But I I agree with a lot of what Caroline just said. It's that the conversation, we've had some great hiring committees. I I have hired, I think, five people in the last couple of years. And it's probably the most important part of my job. And we put together a committee. They sign confidentiality agreements, because people's candidates' information should not go outside of that group. But the conversations that occur, I'll use one example. We hired a young teacher last spring. We had a committee. I always try to include teachers in and around that content area and or grade and somebody from special education. But the the conversation, we came up with two candidates. And the conversation that ensued over the next 24 hours among our group was really rich. And I do want the best candidates we can find for Lincoln Acreman. And Caroline's right, we know our culture, we know our needs, we know our team. And who's going to add value to that team in in many different categories? So and because of that committee, we 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 hired a great candidate. And it was the conversation and the banter back and forth. And it was cultural, it was Lincoln Acreman's future. We we know the the task at hand. And I also think we're very fortunate that we do get great candidates, because it's a very desirable place to work. But then from there, the superintendent and I usually, I I always do a second interview, I think that's important. And then there's another interview at the superintendent level, so.
Yeah, that would be, Caroline, I I I like your comments there, and Beth yours too. I guess it would, you know, just the, just, just the interaction with that. And maybe it's us at the end, end game. But again, I'll just reiterate, it's that, it's that, there was just this disjoint, you know, just the the desire for more on this candidate. And yes, we didn't get to see or, you know, speak to the candidate, and that's definitely part of it. You know, I I just hope it's, it's under consideration and and moving forward, we could, you know, potentially address that.
Just to add on to that, I
Yeah, Anthony, you have anything?
I just wanted to see if maybe we can, when we get into the process more, have some, some items in the non-public for these meetings. I'm very interested to hear, you know, what the the search committee comes up with as their qualifications for an ideal candidate. And I think that we we don't need to be there at the ground level. But I think between the two of you, between the four of you and the administration and and anyone else, can at least keep us up and give us an opportunity to relay some information back to the groups.
Barbara, you have any thoughts?
I just, I kind of tend to agree with Beth that I don't feel that we should be involved in the beginning part. But I definitely like the idea of having to meet or being able to meet someone near the end. And that's really important. We're such a small school, we have a lot of, you know, really invested in and having the best candidates also, so, yeah.
Okay.
Greg, can I just add one thing?
Yeah, please.
Thank you guys for that detail. I actually don't see a need for a seat at that table, per se. It it doesn't necessarily seem appropriate, but more, you know, maybe it's a matter of coming up with a couple of templates where, you know, you provide summaries at certain steps in the process. So we, we feel updated. So when it's time to make a decision, it's not all new information. And I think these things can be quite simple and at the summary level. But understanding who was on that hiring committee, you know, maybe what the terms of the position that you're hiring, what level you're looking for. I know that's probably released publicly, but I don't typically go looking for it. So so I think we could probably come up with a short list of things. And when in the process you feel comfortable sharing and we'd like to be updated, and we can probably check all those boxes.
I think that'd be a really natural thing to have in, in the principal's report, you know, just a, you know, a search, search update. You know, just, just like what you were saying, you know, where where they are with, they have committees together. The interviews are next week. And we'll have someone for you at the next board meeting. That's definitely doable.
Thank you.
So Beth, you said a couple of really interesting things there, and I I didn't think of it, at least one of them, till you said it. I do agree with you, Beth. I think that first meeting, when that candidate was presented to the board, was the first meeting for Jill, Jay, well, not so much Jay, but Anthony. But more importantly, it was on Zoom.
Yeah.
And at that presentation, typically in the past, that candidate has been present in the board, has gotten to meet the candidate, ask a few questions. And I believe right now, there are at least three staff members I can think of that we as a board have not met yet, because we're doing it all Zoom, and I understand that. But I think there's a disconnect in not being able to do that. I agree with everything that's been said. The one thing I want to reiterate is, I I do concur with Jill. I don't think we need a seat at the table. You know, we, we as a board, hire a principal, and and this is the principal's job. The principal, in this case, Beth, knows the staff, knows the culture, knows what is needed on on the staff. And for me personally, I can bring no value to any conversation in the hiring process. I I'm not an educator. And the the one thing I have noticed in my time, and we just kind of talked about it during teacher presentation, is teachers can get very nervous coming in front of a board member, especially the entire board. And when Beth and her search committee are trying to find the right candidate, boy, I I'd hate to lose a good candidate because of board members there, and that candidate is not giving the best interview they can. So I I don't know if we need to be there during that process. For administration, I wholeheartedly agree with Dr. Arkilien, we should be part of that. All of that being said, Beth and Dr. Arkilien, if I put a list of, let's call it requests, that we would like to see possibly in that one page document or two page document, can we take a look at that and review it? I mean, it sounds like we can. You know, like Jill said, who's on the committee, what candidates were hired, what was the process, et cetera, et cetera. I I I think that'd go a long way in solving a lot of the issues we've been having with this. I also agree that in the process, if Beth would touch on it occasionally during the process in the principal's report without revealing too much, because I know there's some confidentiality issues with that as well, that would go a long way. If the board is okay with that, we could put a list of these suggestions down and get it back to Beth and Caroline, and then we can move forward from there.
I'm fine with that. It works.
Sounds good.
Jill, you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll put a list together, and I'll get that to Dr. Arkilien and Beth, and then we can go from there.
Thank you.
Hopefully, this answered some questions for everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next item on the list is personnel. We have renominations this evening. We will be going into non-public. Before we go into non-public, I hope everyone was, I know Jill saw the email I sent the other day about non-public. I'm very concerned about non-public. When we are meeting in person, it's very easy, it's much easier to control with Zoom and our families coming in and out of the rooms. I just ask that we do our best to not have that happen when we go into non-public, because whatever is discussed in non-public deserves the confidentiality and and privacy that that provides. And we need to have frank conversations during that time without extra ears. So not everybody can have a private office, but if you can have your families not around during non-public, it'd be fantastic. Just a, just a thought. Okay, that being said, David, are we going into a special meeting for this? Or how is this going to work this evening for non-public?
Yeah, I can give an overview. So we only have six attendees, so I would recommend staying in this meeting. What we'll do is pull the attendees into our meeting and then put them on hold, which basically means they can't see or hear anything. And then we put them off hold when we're all finished. Additionally, we can lock the meeting so nobody else can join.
That's fine.
Okay. Deb, which one do you want to do?
Well, do you want to do the motion first, and then we'll stop the recording, and then we'll do it?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two. And please forgive me, Deb, I don't know which A, E, A, B, C, D, or E we're using.
There's an A on there, so.
Okay. Is there an A?
Okay.
Okay, can we take a roll call?
Greg Parrish?
Here.
Jason Ferius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman?
Yes.
Vote taken. So I'm going to stop the recording.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, so, I'd like to make a motion to come out of non-public and resume our public meeting. Can I get a second?
A second.
Deb, can we take a roll call?
Greg Parrish?
Present.
Jason Ferius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on teacher? Actually, before we do that, yes, can I get a motion on teacher and administrator renomination, please?
I'll make a motion.
Go for it. Tell you.
I'll make a motion to accept the interim superintendent's recommendation of renominations for Lincoln Acreman's School, certified staff, teachers, and administrators for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Deb, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Ferius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, can I get a motion regarding the Director of Special Education contract?
Just hate those awkward silences. Motion to accept the interim superintendent's recommendation for the contract of Melissa McKeon as Director of Special Ed of the Lincoln Acreman School, effective July 1, 2021, as presented.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Deb, can we take a roll call?
Greg Parrish?
Yes.
Jason Ferius?
Yes.
Jill Swayze?
Yes.
Anthony Lang?
Yes.
And Barbara Goodman?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you. Our next meeting for the Joint Board is next Tuesday at 6:00. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 13 at 6:30. And then the Joint Board Policy Committee is April 14 at 4:30. Again, Barbara, congratulations and welcome. Anthony and Jill, congratulations. If, does anybody have anything else? Anything, do we miss anything, Dr. Arkilien? If, does anybody have anything else? Anything? Do we miss anything, Dr. Killian?
I think we covered it.
All set, Beth? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
I'm going to assume it's all of you.
Yes.
All good. Thank you.
Unanimous.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.